Welcome to the deep dive. We're taking a slightly different approach today. Our friends over at Lionfish Cyber Security and Meerkat Cyber asked if we could put together a kind of focused study session for their students.
That's right.
All about the cybersecurity maturity model certification or CMMC. So think of this as, you know, a targeted guide to really understanding the key bits of CMMC, FCI, and CUI.
Exactly. We've got a great set of practice questions here, and the mission really is to pull out the most crucial information from them. We want to help build that solid foundation for everyone studying with Lionfish and Meerkat. It's super important stuff.
It really is. We're going to cover, well, pretty much the whole spectrum, the assessment process, what FCI and CUI actually are, the CMMC program structure, the regulations behind it all, security controls, best practices.
The ecosystem, the players involved.
And yeah, the code of conduct, which is vital. So let's, uh, let's jump right into the assessment process first.
Okay, sounds good. So one of the first things that comes up is the CAR, the Certification Assessment Readiness Review. What's interesting, I think, is when it happens. It's conducted during the plan and prepare phase. It's sort of like making sure all your ducks are in a row before the main event, you know?
Right, like checking your climbing gear before you start the ascent. So, okay, imagine an organization, let's call them Data Secure Corp. What do they really need to think about before they even start this CMMC journey? What are those first key steps?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Looking at the materials, there are a few critical things. First, Data Secure definitely needs to get a good handle on the actual CMMC requirements.
Okay.
Second, they've got to clearly define their scope, like what part of the business, which systems are actually going for certification?
Makes sense.
Third, what CMMC level are they aiming for? That's crucial. And finally, a big one, they need to find a C3PAO, a certified third-party assessment organization to actually do the assessment.
Okay, so they can't just pick, like, their favorite local IT firm? And what if they know a great assessor, maybe Alex from another C3PAO? Can Data Secure tell their C3PAO, hey, we want Alex?
Uh, no, it doesn't quite work like that. The practice questions are pretty clear. An organization can't force a C3PAO to use a specific assessor. The C3PAO maintains independence in assigning its qualified staff.
Got it. Independence is key. So during the assessment itself, the C3PAO team is collecting evidence. Yeah. What actually counts is good proof.
Absolutely. Objective evidence is really the name of the game here. And it's interesting, the questions point out that even things like screenshots taken by the assessors while they're observing systems, those count.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not just formal documents or policies. Screenshots are legitimate, objective evidence.
That's good to know, it's not just mountains of paperwork. So when the assessors look at this evidence, this artifact, what are they actually checking in against? What criteria matter?
Right, so each piece of evidence, each artifact gets checked against several attributes. There's relevance, does it actually relate to the practice? Timeliness, is it current? Completeness, does it tell the whole story? Accuracy, is it correct? And then the two really big ones, adequacy and sufficiency.
Adequacy and sufficiency.
Hmm.
Okay, those sound like terms the students definitely need to nail down. Can you break those down a bit?
Sure. Adequacy basically asks, does this artifact, or this interview answer, or this demo, does it actually meet the specific requirement of the CMMC practice we're looking at?
Okay, does it hit the mark?
Exactly. Then sufficiency looks broader, it asks. Based on the whole scope of the assessment, do we have enough coverage across all the relevant areas, domains, practices, parts of the organization, to make a reliable judgment about whether that practice is met?
So it's not just some proof, it's the right proof for the requirement that's adequacy, and enough of that right proof across the whole scope, that's sufficiency. And this forms the basis for the report.
Precisely. The materials emphasize that the assessment report results have to be backed up by sufficient and adequate evidence. Without that, the conclusions just don't hold water.
And why is that so critical? Why gather all that evidence?
Well, a couple of main reasons. First, it gives a solid, justifiable basis for the conclusions about compliance.
Right.
And second, it ensures the assessment actually covered the entire scope properly, that nothing important got missed.
Okay. Now, the CMMC assessment guide itself, that must be the bible, right? Does it list everything an assessor needs to check?
You'd think so, but actually, the practice questions point out something important. The further discussion section in the guide, it does not provide a complete exhaustive list of all the assessment objectives.
Okay.
It gives guidance, yeah, but it's not the be-all and end-all checklist.
Good to know, don't rely only on that section. What about when assessors do a walkthrough? What's the point of that? Just getting the lay of the land?
It's, uh, definitely more structured than just a casual tour. A walkthrough, which is a type of examination, really serves two key purposes. One, it lets the assessor see the actual business processes in action.
Uh huh.
And two, it lets them observe the physical security safeguards that are in place, you know, locks, access controls, that kind of thing.
Seeing controls in action, not just on paper. The assessment guide also mentions specifications. Does that mean, like, the specific hardware and software being used?
Interestingly, no. According to these questions, specifications in the guide doesn't refer to the specific hardware or software safeguards. It's more about the functional requirements, what the controls are supposed to do.
Ah, okay, functional requirements. So where do the assessors actually write down what they find? What's the official document?
The main place for recording all the detailed observations and findings is the CMMC Findings Brief Template. That's the formal run.
Findings Brief Template, got it. What about something called the Daily Checkpoint Log? Does that track problems or bottlenecks the assessor ran into?
You might think so, but the questions clarify that the daily checkpoint log does not record bottlenecks faced by the assessor. Its purpose is likely more about tracking daily progress against the plan.
Okay, not an assessor's diary, then. Who's ultimately on the hook for protecting all the sensitive info gathered during the assessment?
That falls primarily on the CCA, the Certified CMMC Assessor leading the assessment. They have the main responsibility for protecting information received.
Makes sense. So we've got examining things, asking questions. What are the sort of formal procedures for getting this objective evidence?
Right. The questions highlight three main procedures. Examine, looking directly at evidence, walkthroughs, inquiry, asking questions, interviews, questionnaires, and observation, actually watching processes and controls happen.
Examine, inquiry, observation, see it, ask about it, watch it. Okay. What happens after the team has gathered some initial info and has preliminary findings?
A really crucial step is discussing those preliminary findings. The objective there is to communicate the initial results directly back to the OSC, the Organization Seeking Certification.
Transparency.
Mm-hmm.
Avoid surprises later.
Exactly.
Now, who decides the criteria for being ready for an assessment? Who approves those readiness benchmarks?
That authority lies with both CMMC AB, the accreditation body, and the C3PAOs themselves. It's kind of a joint responsibility.
Okay. And the readiness review, the TARR we mentioned earlier, what's its core purpose again?
Its main purpose is really to evaluate if both the assessment team and the OSC are genuinely prepared for the assessment to proceed as planned. It's that final readiness check.
Double checking, everyone's ready for the main event?
Yeah.
And the assessment plan, what's the primary goal of putting that together?
The main reason for the assessment plan is resource allocation. Basically figuring out who does what, where, and when for the assessment.
Logistics, okay. What kinds of things could potentially derail a CMMC assessment? What are the whisks?
The questions list things like budget limitations, not having enough qualified assessors available, the complexity of the data collection needed. But interestingly, market competition is specifically called out as not being potential risk to the assessment itself.
Interesting. Business competition doesn't directly impact the audit. What about rough order of magnitude, or ROM? When is that used?
A ROM estimate is typically used early on, just to get a general idea, a ballpark figure, for how long the assessment might take.
Setting expectations on timing. If an OSC sends a formal request to a C3PAO, how fast should they hear back?
C3PAOs are expected to respond within five business days.
Five business days?
Yeah.
Pretty quick. And how does the whole assessment process officially kick off?
It gets started when the C3PAO receives that formal assessment request from an OSC. That's the trigger.
The request starts the clock. And who runs the opening meeting? The kickoff.
That's typically the CMMC assessor, usually the lead assessor, who conducts that opening briefing.
Setting the stage. We mentioned examine, inquiry, observation. Is investigate also an official assessment method?
No, the practice questions are speci-- investigate is not one of the recognized assessment methods in CMMC.
Stick to the official three. Okay, let's quickly revisit adequacy and sufficiency one more time, just to lock it in for the students.
Good idea. Adequacy, does the evidence meet the specific practice requirement? Sufficiency, is there enough of that adequate evidence across the entire scope to make a reliable rating?
Quality and quantity, essentially.
Yeah.
When the assessment's done, what's typically in the final results package?
You'll usually find the final report, the OSC's system security plan, maybe the daily checkpoint log. But, uh, something like detailed server access logs aren't necessarily standard inclusions.
Good to know. And when CMMC docs mention mechanisms, what are they talking about?
Mechanisms refers to the actual, specific hardware, software, or firmware safeguards being used in a system, the technical controls, basically.
The tech tools.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And how does an organization actually achieve a CMMC level? What rating do they need?
To hit a specific level, they need a rating of met or not applicable on every single practice for that level, and for all practices at all the lower levels, too.
Wow, okay. All or nothing for every practice at that level and below. Lastly, on this section, is it the OSC's job to check if the assessors are qualified?
No, the OSC is not responsible for assessing the assessment team's qualifications. That's the job of the C3PAO and the CMMC AB.
Okay, that clarifies the assessment process really well. Let's shift gears now to FCI and CUI, federal contract information and controlled unclassified information.
Right. And the absolute key thing to understand, right off the bat, is that CMMC is fundamentally designed to measure how well a company can protect FCI and CUI. That's the core goal.
Protect, that's the word. Are FCI and CUI basically the same thing?
Ah, a very common point of confusion, this one. The short answer is no. The practice questions make it clear. All CUIs considered FCI, but not all FCI qualifies as CUI.
Okay, so FCI is the bigger umbrella.
Exactly. Think of FCI as the broader category.
So what is FCI?
Yeah.
In simple terms?
FCI is basically any information the government provides, or that's generated for the government under a contract, that is not intended for public release. If it's not meant for the public, it's likely FCI.
Not for public release. Got it. How do companies keep track of all this? Is there a system?
Yeah, it comes down to data classification. That's the process of organizing data based on how important or sensitive it is. This then dictates the security controls needed.
Makes sense. Different levels of protection for different data.
Yeah.
Now, CUI versus classified information. Both need protecting, but what's the main difference?
That's a critical distinction. Classified information has much, much stricter controls, clearances, very limited access. CUI, while it definitely needs protection and specific handling, is generally handled by more people within DoD across different roles. The controls are, uh, generally less restrictive than for classified stuff.
Okay, broader access but still needs rules. What about systems?
Mm-hmm.
If a system touches FCI or CUI, does it need protection?
Absolutely. The rule is, all systems that store, process, or collect FCI or CUI must be protected. No exceptions.
All system, got it. And just to be crystal clear, are FCI and CUI considered classified, like secret or top secret?
Nope. The questions explicitly say both FCI and CUI are unclassified information. Sensitive, yes, needing protection, yes, but not formally classified in the national security sense.
Unclassified but handled with care. I saw something about DoD contracts monitoring for aggregated CUI. What's that about?
Yeah, that's an important concept. It means that while individual pieces of CUI might not seem super sensitive on their own, when you put them together, aggregate them, they might reveal something more critical that could potentially harm warfighters or missions. So contractors need to watch out for that aggregation risk.
The whole is greater than the sum of its parts, sensitivity-wise. When does something officially become CUI?
According to DoD Instruction 5200.48, it becomes CUI when it's created. And it's defined a CUI by the authorized holder based on the existing laws and policies. The marking comes after, to show what it is.
Defined at creation by the holder. Is there a specific rule for protecting basic FCI? A fair clause?
Yep. A fair clause 52.20421, that's the one requiring basic safeguarding for FCI on contractor systems.
FR 52.20421 for basic FCI protection. What are some typical examples of CUI within DoD?
Good question. The practice materials list things like engineering drawings, technical manuals, software source code, executable software, basically sensitive, technical stuff not meant for public eyes.
Technical data, manuals, code. Okay. Who's the main authority for CUI guidance government-wide? Maintains the registry.
That would be RRA, the National Archives and Records Administration. They provide the guidance and maintain the official CUI registry.
RRA is the CUI authority.
Okay.
What are the basic rules for people handling CUI, the authorized holders?
32 CFR 2002 lays it out. They need to keep it under direct control, use controlled environments, physical and logical, and actively prevent anyone unauthorized from accessing, seeing, or even overhearing it.
Control, secure environments, prevent unauthorized access. What if a contractor creates info for the government? Is it assumed public or FCI?
The assumption is it's FCI unless the government specifically marks it approved for public release. So default is protect as FCI.
Default is FCI. Can you mail CUI through the regular post office?
You can, according to the questions, but only if you follow specific procedures. You can't just drop it in a blue box, like a regular letter. There are rules for packaging and handling.
Specific steps required. What does the marking CUI SP mean? The SP?
SP stands for specified. It means that category of CUI has additional, specific handling, or safeguarding rules beyond the basic CUI requirements, as defined in the NARA registry.
Specified means extra rules apply. Is the CUI registry fixed, or does it change?
Oh, it definitely changes. NARA updates it. So what qualifies as CUI today might be refined tomorrow. You have to stay current.
It's a living document. Can you give an example or two of those specified categories?
Sure. The questions mention immigration information and proprietary business information as examples of CUI-specified category.
Okay, and if a document has just one paragraph of CUI, how should the whole thing be marked?
The rule is clear. If there's any CUI anywhere in the document, every single page needs the CUI banner marking.
All pages get the banner if any CUI is present. Right. That covers FCI and CUI well. Let's look at the CMMC program structure itself now.
Okay, so if you need the absolute definitive guide on how assessments are done, the document you need is the CMMC Assessment Process, or CAP. That's the playbook.
CAP is the assessment playbook. And if Data Secure Corp needs to find a C3PAO, where do they look?
The official source is the CMMC AB Marketplace on the CMMC accreditation body's website. That's the sanction list.
CMMC AB Marketplace, got it. Can an organization get a sort of practice assessment done before the real deal?
Yes, definitely. They can get a pre-assessment. These can be done by either an RPO, a registered provider organization, or even by a C3PAO. It's a good way to find gaps beforehand.
Good idea to do a dry run. Who initially defines the assessment scope?
The OSC, the Organization Seeking Certification, provides the initial scope. They know where their relevant data and systems are.
The OSC sets the initial boundaries. What if, during the assessment, the OSC fixes a problem after the assessor has already noted it as not met? Can the rating be changed, then?
Uh, no. The practice questions state the score can't be changed if deficiencies are fixed after the team has made its initial practice ratings. The assessment reflects the state at that time.
No changing the score after the fact. We talked about examine, interview, observation for CMMC. Are those the same methods used for the underlying NIST 800-171 requirements?
Almost. For NIST SP 800-171 specifically, the methods listed are examine, interview, and test. Observation isn't explicitly called out there in the same way.
Subtle difference. Test instead of observation for 800-171. When the assessment team shows up, does the lead assessor pick the main point of contact at the OSC?
No, usually the OSC designates their own primary point of contact, or POC, for the assessment team to work with.
OSC picks their liaison. What if a contractor uses a third-party service that already meets a CMMC practice? Do they get credit?
Yes, they can. A contractor can inherit a practice objective met by a third party. No need to reinvent the wheel if it's already covered.
Get inherent controls.
Oh.
Good. If a C3PAO gets an assessment request, what are their main obligations in responding?
Key things. Respond within five business days. Respond in writing. And assign a lead assessor, a CCA, to the job.
Respond quickly, in writing. Assign a lead. Who has the final say on the detailed scope for a Level 2 assessment?
The lead assessor makes the final determination on the detailed scope for Level 2.
Lead assessor finalizes the scope. And who decides how much evidence is needed for each practice?
That's also the lead assessor. They determine the necessary interviews, observations, documents, et cetera, required for each practice.
Lead assessor decides evidence needs. What determines how big the assessment team is and how long they're on site?
Mostly depends on the OSC's size and complexity, the complexity of the systems and scope, and the geographical spread, how many locations are involved.
Size, complexity, geography. Makes sense. Is the assessment plan just a guideline, or more formal?
It's pretty formal. It's essentially a signed contract between the OSC's assessment official and the C3PAO, outlining how the assessment will run.
Signed contract.
Yeah.
What's the main goal of that Certification Assessment Readiness Review, the CAR?
Its primary purpose is to check if both the assessment team and the OSC are actually ready to start the assessment as planned. A final readiness check for everyone.
Final check. When the assessment team is interviewing OSC staff, what are some best practices?
Good practices include ensuring confidentiality, asking clarifying questions, verifying interview answers with actual artifacts or documents, and always mapping the information gathered back to the specific CMMC practices.
Confidentiality, clarify, verify, map back. Got it. And the three ways to collect objective evidence, again, just to be sure?
Examine, interview, and test. Those are the core methods for CMMC assessments.
Examine, interview, test.
Okay.
Okay, and the sufficiency criteria, what basic question is it trying to answer?
Essentially, do we have enough of the right evidence across the whole scope to confidently rate each practice? It's about having comprehensive proof.
Enough right evidence, comprehensively, great. That nails down the program structure. Let's move into the regulatory framework underpinning CMMC.
All right, first up, FR 52.20424. The practice questions note this requires a set of 15 basic cybersecurity controls, but it applies to safeguarding contractor information systems generally, not just those processing FCI.
Okay, broader application for those 15 controls. What about the Defense Federal Acquisition Regulation, DFARS? What's its general aim mentioned here?
One aim mentioned is preventing excessive reliance on foreign suppliers, particularly in critical sectors.
Okay. And DFARS 252.2047020, the assessment requirement, does that apply to everything?
No, it specifically does not apply to commercial off-the-shelf or COS items.
Not for QAS? Is that DFAR 7020 clause in effect now?
The questions state that on or after October 1st, 2025, it will be applicable to relevant solicitations and contracts. So it's coming.
Okay, October 2025 deadline. Who do the NIST SP 800-171 requirements apply to?
They apply broadly to government contractors and their subcontractors who handle CUI.
Primes and subs handling CUI. And what's the main security objective of NIST SP 800-171 regarding CUI?
Primarily, it's focused on ensuring the confidentiality of CUI, protecting it from unauthorized disclosure.
Confidentiality is key for 800-171. What types of assessments does NIST 800-171 allow for?
It outlines three types. Self-assessment, independent third-party assessment, like CMMC, and government-sponsored assessment.
Self-third-party government, got it. What about NIST SP 800-172? What specific threat does that address?
NIST SP 800-172 specifically addresses enhanced security requirements to protect against advanced persistent threats, or APTs.
172 is for APTs. And NIST SP 853, what kind of risks does its control guidance help mitigate?
It's quite comprehensive. The questions say it helps mitigate environmental, operational, and transition risks, basically, a wide range.
Broad risk mitigation. What's the main goal of 853?
It aims to strengthen both security and privacy controls for federal systems, and it's often referenced beyond just federal use.
Security and privacy focus. Now, back to CUI. Executive Order 13556 established the CUI program. Who did it designate as the executive agent?
That executive order designated NARA, the National Archives and Records Administration, as the executive agent for the CUI program.
NARA, again, the executive agent. Did NARA set up a whole new government department for CUI?
No, not a department. NARA established the CUI registry, which lists the categories and guidance.
A registry, not a department. There was a deadline mentioned for agencies to review and remark documents under the new CUI rules.
Yes, the questions mention agencies were required to do that prior to November 14, 2016.
Okay, a historical deadline. What about CERT RM? Does it help identify all organizational risks?
No, the questions clarify that CERT RM does not help identify and plan for all organizational risks. It has a more specific focus.
Not all risks, but can it help with consistency under stress?
Yes, it can be used to help reduce inconsistencies and unpredictability in processes, especially when an organization is under stress.
Okay. What is CERT RM fundamentally?
It's defined as a process improvement model focused on resilience management.
A process improvement model. Let's revisit RFIFR 52.20421. Does it really only require 15 basic cybersecurity requirements?
Ah, trick question, perhaps. While often referred to as 15, it actually references the 17 basic safeguarding requirements from NIST 800-171, Section 3.1.
So 17, not 15, technically derived from 800-171, got it. How often do organizations need reassessment according to the NIST SP 800-171 DoD assessment methodology?
The frequency might actually vary based on the specific contracting authority or requirements. It's not always a fixed period, like every three years, though that's common.
Depends on the contract.
Okay.
Regarding DFARS 252.2047021, the CMMC clause, does it only apply to the prime contractor?
No, it's crucial to note that both prime contractors and their subcontractors must maintain the requisite CMMC level for the contract.
Primes and D subs need the required level. Is backup management one of the core security requirement families in NIST SP 800-171?
While backup is a critical security practice, backup management itself is not listed as one of the 14 core security requirement families in NIST SP 800-171. It falls under other families, like media protection or system and information integrity.
Not a main family, but covered within others. What's the overall goal, the main objective, of a CMMC assessment?
The overarching goal is to determine the contractor's effectiveness in implementing controls to protect CUI data.
Effectiveness in protecting CUI. Do all DoD contracts involve issuing common access cards or CACs?
No, not all DoD contracts require or involve the issuance of CACs to contractor personnel.
Okay. How does one typically get access to the DoD's CUI registry online?
Access is usually provided through a PIV authentication certificate or equivalent credential.
PIV cert needed. Whose responsibility is it to proactively improve security controls? The governments or the contractors?
It's definitely the contractor's responsibility to be proactive in improving their security controls over time.
Contract responsibility. Okay, let's quickly recap those key clauses. FRR 52.20421 covers?
The 17 basic safeguarding requirements from NIST 800-171 for protecting FCI.
DFARS 252.2047012.
Forces compliance with the full NIST SP 800-171, all 110 controls, for handling CUI plus incident reporting requirements.
DFARS 252.2047019.
Requires submitting a NIST SP 800-171 DoD Assessment Summary Level Score to SPRS, typically every three years.
DFARS 252.2047020.
Requires allowing government access for medium or high-confidence assessments conducted by DoD personnel.
NIST SP 800-171 R2 itself.
Dictates the requirements for protecting CUI in non-federal systems.
NIST SP 800-172.
Establish the CUI program and mandated the NEST CERT Registry.
Okay, do all agency-specific policies about CUI automatically apply to outside organizations?
No, not necessarily. Agency-specific CUI policies may not always apply directly to external entities unless specified in a contract or agreement.
Depends on the contract. Can organizations use CERT or RM to evaluate their current security and continuity practices against desired maturity levels?
Yes, they can use CERT or RM for that purpose, assessing current practices in security planning, business continuity, and IT operations against a maturity framework.
Okay, FAR 52.20421 and DFARS 252.2047012 together. Do they introduce more than just 15 basic practices?
Oh, definitely. FAR 21 brings the 17 basic ones, and DFAR 7012 brings the full 110 from NIST 800-171, so way more than 15 together.
Right, much more comprehensive together. FSMA 2014, who did it? Assigned the main leadership role for federal information security to DoD.
No, FSMA 2014 assigned that leadership role to the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, OMB.
OMB, not DoD. Is continuous availability a specific requirement under FSMA?
No, continuous availability isn't a named FSMA requirement. FSMA focuses more on security management, risk assessment, and controls, not necessarily guaranteeing 100% uptime like that.
Security, not availability guarantee.
Right.
In the NIST Risk Management Framework, RMF, when do you categlog the information system and data?
That happens during the categorize step of the RMF.
Categorize step, and when is the monitoring strategy developed?
The monitoring strategy is developed during the assess step of the RMF.
Assess step. Finally, what does the CUI marking FA-only indicate?
FA-only is a dissemination control marking, indicating that the CUI is restricted to dissemination among federal employees only.
Restricted to feds, okay, that's a solid run-through of the regulatory side. Let's look at security controls and best practices next.
Sounds good. Let's start with FedRAMP. In its agency authorization process, what happens in the preparation stage?
According to the questions, the preparation stage involves the preauthorization process and the readiness assessment.
Preauthorization and readiness assessment, okay. Now, thinking about those 17 basic safeguarding requirements in FAR 52.20421, is backup management and business continuity specifically covered there?
No, the questions indicate that specific area is not explicitly covered under those basic 17 requirements. Again, backups are crucial, but not one of those specific 17 line items.
Important distinction. What happens if just one subcontractor on a project fails to comply with the contract's CMMC or security requirements?
This is a tough one. The material suggests that if one subcontractor fails, all subcontractors might be considered non-compliant in that context. It highlights the interconnected risk. Wow, okay, high stakes for everyone. When implementing controls to protect data, what's arguably the most important first step?
Data classification. You need to know what data you have and how sensitive it is before you can effectively protect it.
Know your data first. Under the Destination Control Statement, DCS Requirements for Exports, is a license number always required on a commercial invoice?
Not necessarily. The questions indicate a license number is not always an essential element on the commercial invoice under DCS requirements. Other information might be key.
Okay. If a contractor develops an information system using profits from government projects, does the government automatically get unlimited rights to that system?
No, the government does not automatically gain unlimited rights in that scenario. Data rights are complex and depend on the contract terms.
Contract terms dictate rights. NIST SP 800-171 mentions encryption. Should data only be encrypted when it's moving across the network?
Ideally, no. As per NIST SP 800-171 principles, data should ideally be encrypted in all states: at rest, stored, in motion, transmitted, and potentially even in use, depending on the risk.
Encrypted everywhere ideally. Configuration management tools. Which one listed is not typically considered one? Examples given were Chef, Puppet, Ansible, and Caseware Idea.
Caseware Idea is the outlier there. It's generally used for data analysis and auditing, not configuration management like the others.
Okay. What are the basic steps for effective configuration management?
Key steps include: identification of assets, establishing a baseline configuration for the system, and ensuring proper version control for changes.
Identify baseline, version control. If someone makes an unauthorized change to data, what aspect of security is compromised?
That affects data integrity, ensuring data hasn't been improperly altered.
Integrity. What about personally identifiable information, PII? Are things like religion and gender typically considered PII?
Yes, according to common definitions used in privacy regulations, both religion and gender can be considered PII, especially when linked with an individual's identity.
Okay. Physical controls, network controls, session controls.
Yeah.
What's their main objective regarding CUI? The source mentioned objectivity and availability, is that right?
Hmm, that might be a slight error in the source material provided. Typically, these controls primarily aim to ensure the confidentiality and integrity of CUI and also its availability. Objectivity isn't usually listed as a primary security objective in this context. Confidentiality, integrity, availability, the CIA triad is more standard.
Right, CIA triad makes more sense. Confidentiality, integrity, availability. What's a classic example of two-factor authentication?
A very common example is using something you have, like a smart card, combined with something you know, like a personal identification number or key.
Something you have and something you know. Good example. Okay, let's move into the CMMC ecosystem itself and the certification process.
Right, so the cyber AB, formerly CMMC AB, has different partners. Who partners with the licensed training providers, LTPs, and licensed partner publishers, LPPs, to actually train and certify the assessors?
That would be CIICO, the CMMC Assessment and Certification Organization. They manage the certification exams and process.
CIICO handles the assessor certification. Now, what about registered provider organizations, RPOs? Can they conduct official CMMC assessments? No, RPOs provide advice, consulting, and readiness support, but they do not conduct the actual certified CMMC assessments.
RPOs advise, they don't assess. Which entity is licensed to actually contract with OSCs to perform CMMC assessment services?
That's the C3PAO, the Certified Third-Party Assessment Organization. They are the ones licensed to perform the assessments.
C3PAOs do the assessments. Can a certified CMMC professional, CCP, work on an assessment team alone?
No, a CCP must work under the supervision of a certified CMMC assessor, CCA, to participate on a formal assessment team.
CCP needs CCA supervision. Who has the final say, the final interpretation authority on assessment findings?
The lead assessor holds that final interpretation authority for the assessment findings.
Lead assessor calls the shots on findings. And who picks the lead assessor for a specific assessment?
Lead assessors are selected and assigned by the C3PAO that is conducting the assessment.
C3PAO selects the lead. What can a CCP actually do on an assessment team under the lead's direction?
Under supervision, a CCP can perform various tasks like scheduling interviews, helping evaluate evidence against practices, and documenting conformity or non-conformity.
Okay, supporting roles. Can someone who works as a CCP or CCA for one company provide consulting services to an OSC and then later be part of the assessment team for that same OSC?
Absolutely not. That's a major conflict of interest. CCPs and CCAs cannot consult for and then assess the same organization seeking certification.
Clear conflict of interest rule. Who is licensed to deliver the official training for CMMC professionals and instructors?
That would be the licensed training providers, or LTPs. They deliver the approved CMMC curriculum.
LTPs deliver training. What about certified CMMC assessors, CCAs? What roles can they fill?
CCAs are quite versatile. They can provide consulting services, just not to organizations they will assess. They can participate as members of assessment teams, and importantly, they can lead formal CMMC assessments.
Consult, participate, lead assessments. What about provisionally credentialed professionals? What does that term cover?
That term referred to individuals like provisional assessors and provisional instructors who are authorized to operate during the initial CMMC beta or pilot period before the full program was operational.
The early adopters, basically. Was NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory, JPL, involved in actually developing the CMMC model?
No, JPL was not involved in the development of the CMMC model itself. That was primarily DoD and the CMMC AB working with industry and academia.
Okay. Does the NSA provide support to all companies in the defense industrial base, DIB?
No, the NSA provides more targeted cybersecurity support, often focused on the top-tier DIB companies, particularly those involved in critical infrastructure or handling highly sensitive programs.
Targeted support from NSA. Which DFARS clause requires contractors to report cyber incidents rapidly within 72 hours?
That's DFARS 252.2047012. It mandates that 72-hour reporting window for cyber incidents involving covered defense information.
DFAR 7012 for incident reporting. Who acts as the central clearinghouse for classified incident reports within the DIB?
That role falls to DCSA, the Defense Counterintelligence and Security Agency.
DCSA for classified reports. Let's reconfirm DFARS 252.2047012 again. What are its key requirements?
Key requirements are implementing the NIST SP 800-171 security controls and the specific cyber incident reporting procedures for DIB suppliers.
800-171 controls plus incident reporting. CMMC 2.0 introduced some flexibility. Can companies ever do self-assessments?
Yes, CMMC 2.0 allows for annual self-assessments for all organizations seeking Level 1, and also for a subset of organizations seeking Level 2, those not handling critical CUI related to national security.
Self-assessment option for Level 1 and some Level 2. Can a DIB contractor get CMMC certified for just part of their network?
Yes, absolutely. A contractor can achieve a specific CMMC level for their entire enterprise network, or they can define a specific segment or enclave for the certification scope.
Full network or specific enclave. Who is responsible for the overall management of the CMMC ecosystem, accrediting C3PAOs, certifying individuals, et cetera?
That's the CMMC AB, now known as the cyber AB. They build, accredit, certify, and manage the whole ecosystem.
The cyber AB manages the ecosystem. Does CMMC always require an assessment by a C3PAO?
For certain levels, yes. CMMC requires verification through an independent third-party assessment conducted by an accredited C3PO for organizations requiring Level 2 certification involving critical CUI and for all Level 3 certifications, which are government-led.
Third-party assessment needed for higher-levels critical CUI. Let's recheck FAR clause 52.20421 again. How many basic safeguarding requirements does it have?
It references the 17 basic safeguarding requirements from NIST 800-171 to protect federal contract information, FCI.
17 basics for FCI. How does OUSD, the Undersecretary of Defense for Acquisition and Sustainment, view cybersecurity in relation to acquisition?
They consider cybersecurity the very foundation of the acquisition process, not just, say, a co-equal pillar. It's fundamental.
Cybersecurity is foundational. What is FedRAMP?
FedRAMP is a government-wide program that provides a standardized approach to security assessment, authorization, and continuous monitoring for cloud products and services used by federal agencies.
Standardized cloud security for government. Why is it important for CMMC ecosystem members to use the official CMMC AB materials and methods?
It's required to preserve the integrity and consistency of service delivery across the entire CMMC ecosystem. Everyone needs to be on the same page using approved methods.
Consistency and integrity. What's the legal term for a contract where parties agree not to disclose confidential information shared between them?
That's a non-disclosure agreement, or NDA.
NDA. Okay, that covers the ecosystem well. Let's finish up with the Crucial Code of Professional Conduct, the COPC.
Right, the ethical bedrock. So what if someone in the CMMC ecosystem gets convicted of a crime, maybe something seemingly unrelated, like tax evasion? Do they need to report that to the CMMC AB?
Yes, absolutely. The practice questions state you're required to report any crime conviction or guilty plea to the CMMC AB, even if it seems unrelated to your CMMC role. Transparency is key.
Wow, okay, broad reporting requirement. Who is actually bound by this code of professional conduct? Just the assessors?
No, it's much broader. All individuals and entities that have any kind of formal relationship with the CMMC AB, now cyber AB, are bound by the COPC. That includes RPOs, C3PAOs, LTPs, LPPs, certified individuals, et cetera.
Everyone in the ecosystem. Which principle of the COPC specifically deals with treating confidential information carefully and only sharing it with authorized people?
That falls under the principle of confidentiality.
Confidentiality. What about the principle of professionalism? What does that entail?
Professionalism means, among other things, never misrepresenting yourself or your company regarding your CMMC credentials or capabilities, acting ethically and competently.
Don't misrepresent yourself. What should you do if you see someone else potentially violating the COPC? Should you publicly call them out?
The recommended approach is usually to privately request clarification from the individual, or perhaps offer help if it seems like a misunderstanding. Escalating formally might be needed, but starting privately is often advised.
Try clarification first. What can happen if someone is found to have violated the COPC? What are the potential consequences?
There's a range of potential corrective actions. A formal warning, required remediation or retraining, suspension of credentials, denial or termination of credentials, registration or accreditation, and even temporary or permanent loss of eligibility to participate in the CMMC ecosystem.
Serious consequences. Can the CMMC AB investigate someone just based on, say, unusual behavior, even without a formal complaint? Yes, the practice questions confirm. The CMMC AB reserves the right to investigate potential violations based on observing unusual behavior or receiving credible information, not just formal complaints. Okay. Does the duty of confidentiality end when your work engagement with a client finishes?
No, definitely not. The principle of confidentiality requires you to exercise due care with privileged client information even after the work engagement has concluded.
Confidentiality is ongoing. What about information integrity? What kind of action would violate that?
A key violation of information integrity would be submitting false information or deliberately omitting relevant facts to help someone else improperly obtain CMMC credentials or status. Basically, lying or hiding truth in official submissions.
Don't falsify information. Can a CMMC professional guarantee to an OSC that they will pass their assessment?
Absolutely not. The COPC explicitly prohibits guaranteeing assessment success. Assessments must be objective.
No guarantees. What are the ultimate potential results of a COPC violation for an individual or entity?
It could lead to the denial or revocation of credentials, registration or accreditation, and potentially a permanent loss of eligibility to operate within the CMMC ecosystem.
High stakes. What should professionals do about conflicts of interest?
They need to proactively disclose any potential or actual conflicts of interest and take steps to minimize their impact on objectivity.
Disclose and minimize. Was the licensed training provider, LTP designation, something that was available back in October 2021?
According to the timeline implied in the questions, no. The LTP designation was not yet available for issuance at that specific point in time, October 2021. The program was still rolling out.
Okay. Is setting the actual CMMC certification requirements and thresholds a responsibility of the CMMC AB?
No, setting the actual requirements, i.e. the practices and levels, is the responsibility of the Department of Defense. The CMMC AB's role is to operationalize the assessment and accreditation based on those DoD requirements.
DoD sets requirements, AB operationalizes. Is the Code of Professional Conduct just a set of guidelines, or is it mandatory?
It's mandatory. The questions state the COPC requirements are mandatory for registered or certified entities and individuals.
Mandatory rules. If a C3PAO loses its only associated CCA, how long do they have to get another one?
They have 30 days to associate with another qualified CCA to maintain their status.
30-day window. How long is a CMMC certification typically valid for?
A CMMC certification is valid for a maximum of three years.
Three years. Can C3PAOs hire independent CCAs like contractors to help with assessments?
Yes, the questions confirm that C3PAOs may obtain the services of an independent CCA to conduct assessments, provided they meet all requirements.
Okay. What specific ISO certification is required for a C3PAO to become accredited?
C3PAOs need to achieve ISO 4120 certification, which relates to bodies performing inspection.
ISO 18020. Can C3PAOs store assessment data with cloud providers that are not FedRAMP authorized?
The question suggests they can, technically, but doing so might introduce significant security risks and potentially violate other contractual or regulatory requirements, like DFAR 76 while flow-down.
It's generally not advisable for handling CUI assessment data.
Risky, but perhaps technically possible, according to this source. Who can actually perform official CMMC assessments?
Only authorized and accredited C3PAOs are permitted to perform CMMC assessments. Authorized and accredited C3PAOs only. If an RPO hires a CCA onto their staff, does that make the RPO eligible to perform assessments?
No, hiring a CCA does not make an RPO eligible to perform assessment services. Only accredited C3PAOs can do that. The roles are distinct.
RPOs still can assess. If a finance publisher has certain characteristics, does that automatically qualify them to be a licensed partner publisher, LPP?
Not necessarily based just on being a finance publisher. Becoming an LPP involves meeting specific criteria and agreements set by the CMMC AB.
Specific criteria apply. Who actually created the CMMC ecosystem structure?
The CMMC AB Board of Directors is credited with creating the CMMC ecosystem framework.
Okay. Who maintains the CMMC AB marketplace website?
The CMMC AB, cyber AB, maintains the marketplace.
Right. Is C3PO an assessment provider type in CMMC?
Eh, no. While similarly named, C3PO is a droid from Star Wars, not a CMMC assessment provider. It should be C3PAO.
Good catch. Who is responsible for developing the official CMMC training curriculum, LPPs or LTPs?
The licensed partner publishers, LPPs, are responsible for the curriculum development. LTPs then deliver that curriculum.
LPPs develop, LTPs deliver. Are C3PAOs licensed by the DoD or the CMMC AB?
C3PAOs are licensed by the CMMC AB, cyber AB.
Can instructors and assessors receive provisional accreditation?
Yes. As we discussed, provisional accreditation was a pathway, especially during the initial rollout.
What do registered practitioners, RPs, primarily do?
RPs are consultants who primarily help organizations seeking certification, OSCs, design and implement the necessary CMMC practices and prepare for assessment. They provide advisory services.
RPs advise OSCs. Can a CCA consult for an OSC and then assess that same OSC?
No, we covered this, but it bears repeating, absolutely not allowed due to conflict of interest.
Definitely not. Is getting a top-secret security clearance a requirement to become a certified CMMC professional?
Yeah. No, obtaining a top-secret clearance is not a requirement to become a CCP.
Okay. Does the COPC apply to everyone working in the DIB or just those involved in CMMC services?
The COPC specifically applies only to those individuals and/or entities that provide licensed and certified CMMC services through the CMMC AB.
Only licensed certified CMMC folks. If you face a situation that might compromise your integrity as a CMMC professional, what document should you refer to?
You should refer to the Code of Professional Conduct, COPC.
COPC for integrity questions. Is the COPC binding for all CMMC AB members and certified individuals?
Yes, it is binding for all of them.
If someone doesn't act in a way that aligns with their CMMC certification or role, which COPC principle might they be violating?
That would likely demonstrate a lack of professionalism.
Professionalism. Is the ISO IA Code of Ethics also binding for everyone in the CMMC ecosystem?
No. While potentially relevant, the ISO IA Code of Ethics is not explicitly listed as a binding document for all CMMC AB members in the same way the COPC is.
COPC is the binding one. If accepting an audit assignment might create a conflict of interest, what should you do first?
You should provide a disclaimer of the potential conflict of interest to management before accepting the assignment.
Disclose before accepting. If you're a CMMC implementation consultant and you're asked to perform the certified assessment for the client you just helped, what should you do?
You must decline the assessment assignment due to the conflict of interest.
Decline. Which of these is not a prohibited behavior for CMMC assessors? Fulfilling commitments, misrepresenting qualifications, or disclosing confidential info?
Fulfilling all commitments is expected, not prohibited. The others are prohibited.
Right. When is a CMMC assessor authorized to disclose confidential client information?
Only under two main circumstances. When explicitly authorized by the client and when required by law or legal process.
Client-off AND legal requirement. What activities would constitute a breach of confidentiality?
Examples include being unable to ensure data privacy, for example, losing a laptop with data, or disclosing sensitive client information to an unauthorized third party without consent.
Okay. Does the duty of confidentiality for assessors end after the assessment?
No. CMMC assessors are required to maintain confidentiality even after the assessment or consultation engagement is finished.
It persists. What does information integrity mean in this context?
Information integrity means retaining the accuracy and authenticity of client information, ensuring it hasn't been improperly altered or misrepresented.
Accuracy and authenticity. If an assessor discovers an anomaly or potential issue during an assessment, what's the first thing they should do?
They should document the results and findings related to the anomaly.
Document first. Is the ISO IE Code of Ethics a mandatory document within the CMMC ecosystem?
Repeating this for clarity, no. It is not listed as a mandatory document to be followed under all circumstances within CMMC, unlike the COPC.
Okay. What if an assessor helps a client fix an anomaly specifically to avoid reporting it? What COPC principles does that violate?
That would likely violate multiple principles. Information integrity, not reporting accurately, proper use of methods, not following assessment procedures, and professionalism and objectivity lacking independence.
Yeah.
So, all of the above in the typical multiple-choice format.
Violates multiple principles. What if an assessor only uses inquiry, asking questions, even when other evidence is available? Which principle might that violate?
That could violate the proper use of methods, as assessments typically require a combination of examine, interview, inquiry, and test, not just relying on inquiry alone when other evidence exists.
Need multiple methods. Should conflicts of interest be documented and approved before continuing an assignment?
Yes, all perceived and actual conflicts should be documented, communicated to relevant parties, and approved prior to continuing the assignment.
Document and approve first. What about undercutting competitors' prices significantly just to win business? What principle might that violate?
Aggressively low pricing solely to damage competitors could be seen as a violation of professionalism, potentially damaging the reputation of the profession.
Professionalism issue. Mr. XYZ was convicted of a felony but thinks he doesn't need to report it because it's unrelated to CMMC. Is he correct?
No, Mr. XYZ is not correct. As we discussed, he must disclose the conviction to the CMMC AB typically within 30 days.
Must disclose within 30 days. What's the most effective way to legally restrict the disclosure of sensitive information shared between parties?
Signing a non-disclosure agreement, NDA, is generally the most effective contractual way.
NDA. Is a contract valid if the C3PAO's fee depends on the OSC achieving certification?
No, a contract with a fee contingent on the assessment result passing is not a valid contract under CMMC rules, as it creates a massive conflict of interest.
Contingency fees are invalid. How long does someone have to file an appeal against a corrective action imposed by the CMMC AB?
They typically have 30 days to file an appeal.
30 days to appeal. Are CMMC working group chairs authorized to revise corrective actions recommended by the CMMC AB?
No, working group chairs generally do not have the authority to revise actions recommended by the CMMC AB's disciplinary bodies.
Okay. When might a COPC breach investigation be initiated?
Investigation might start if a formal complaint is received, if credible information suggesting a violation is received from any source, or based on observations made by a certified quality auditor or similar oversight function.
Multiple triggers for investigation. Does the COPC just set general expectations or specific ones?
It sets specific expectations for conduct for CMMC AB credentialed individuals and accredited entities delivering licensed services.
Specific expectations. Which of these is not a principle of the COPC? Confidentiality, stubbornness, professionalism, integrity?
Stubbornness is clearly not a principle of the COPC.
Right. Do CMMC professionals have to report their service delivery results completely and honestly?
Yes, there is a requirement to report CMMC service delivery results completely and with integrity.
Are there actual consequences for violating the COPC?
Yes, as we discussed, there are definitely consequences, ranging from warnings to loss of credentials.
Who initiates a violation investigation?
The CMMC AB, Cyber AB, is the organization that initiates a violation investigation.
What's the potential outcome of an investigation?
It may result in specific findings and recommendations for corrective action against the individual or entity.
Corrective action, possible. How long do you have to appeal that corrective action outcome?
Again, typically 30 days to appeal.
Is it okay to violate a customer's intellectual property rights if you have their permission?
Hmm. That's tricky phrasing in the source. While having permission might mitigate legal issues with the customer, violating IP rights could still potentially breach ethical duties under professionalism or integrity, depending on the context, especially if it involves third-party IP. It's generally not okay ethically, even with permission sometimes. The source phrasing is a bit ambiguous here.
Nuance needed there. Is confidentiality mainly about refraining from dishonesty?
No, confidentiality is primarily about protecting sensitive data from unauthorized disclosure. Refraining from dishonesty falls more under integrity and professionalism.
And is professionalism primarily about protecting customer data?
No, professionalism is more about acting competently, ethically, and in line with your credentials and the standards of the profession. Protecting customer data is primarily under confidentiality.
Okay, that clarifies the COPC principles well. Let's move to the final sections. Assessment scope and implementation, and then CMMC practices.
Right. So, when deciding how much data to collect during an assessment, what's the best guiding factor?
The defined scope of the assessment itself is the best factor for determining the necessary extent of data collection.
Scope dictates data collection. Generally speaking, what systems are included in the CMMC assessment scope?
Typically, the CMMC assessment scope includes all systems that store, process, or transmit federal contract information, FCI, or controlled unclassified information, CUI.
Systems handling FCI, CUI. If only the New York office of ABC Co. is assessed for CMMC, does the whole company get certified?
No, if only the New York office is assessed, including any supporting units for that scope, then only that specific New York office environment will receive the CMMC certification.
Certification applies only to the assessed scope. What's an effective security approach mentioned regarding network design? Using physical and logical separation is highlighted. For example, creating two distinct domains, one for public-facing systems and another, more secure domain for FCI, CUI, potentially with further subnetworks.
Segregation is key. Can specific host units within a larger organization apply for CMMC certification on their own?
Yes. The concept of a host unit allows specific parts of an organization to seek certification for their defined scope.
What factors go into defining the CMMC assessment scope?
Key factors include: the specific organization unit being assessed, the locations where FCI, CUI is stored or processed, and the target CMMC maturity level, ML, for the certification.
Or unit, data location, target level. If a CMMC assessor helps an OSC define its scope, maybe add some systems to it, does that automatically create a threat or conflict for the OSC?
Not necessarily. Assisting with scope clarification is part of the process. It only becomes a threat if the assessor starts acting like a consultant and designing solutions within that scope definition process, which would cross the line into a conflict of interest.
Scope clarification is okay, consulting is not. What kind of information does the CMMC AB intake form typically record?
It mainly records basic demographic information about the client organization seeking certification.
Basic demographics. Who confirms or determines the final assessment scope? The OSC.
No, while the OSC provides the initial input, the lead assessor is responsible for confirming and determining the final validated scope of the assessment.
Lead assessor finalizes scope. Who ensures the assessment team members all know the details of the assessment plan and scope?
The lead assessor is responsible for validating that all team members are aware of the assessment details before starting.
Lead assessor briefs the team. What exactly is a host unit in CMMC terms?
A host unit is defined as a specific group of people, processes, and technology within a larger parent organization, like an HQ, that handles a specific DOD contract requirement and is considered the OSC for the purpose of its own assessment.
A defined part of a larger org. What's a security boundary?
The security boundary defines the information systems, their components, and the surrounding environment where sensitive data, like CUI or FCI, is stored, processed, or handled, and where the security controls are applied.
The perimeter of protection. Can you give an example of sensitive information that might be CUI?
Controlled technical information, CTI, is often cited as an example of sensitive information that frequently qualifies as CUI.
Okay. Should the assessment scope only cover data when it's stored at rest?
No, the assessment scope needs to consider all data states. Data at rest, data in motion, being transmitted, and data in use, being processed.
All data states matter. Do systems outside the main CUI, FCI environment ever need to be included in the scope?
Yes, they might need to be included if they can impact the security of the in-scope systems. For example, a shared authentication server or a system used for security patching might be considered security protection assets and fall within scope, even if they don't directly handle CUI.
Systems that affect security might be in scope too. What defines a system as being definitively out of scope?
Generally, a system that is not CUI-contaminated is properly segmented or logically separated from the CUI environment and has no security connection or impact is considered out of scope.
No CUI, segmented, no security impact, out of scope. What's the main goal of using network segmentation in a CMMC context?
The primary objective is to establish strong controls over the FCI, CUI environment by limiting access points and data flows between the secure segment and other less trusted networks.
Control access, limit data flow. After an organization achieves Level 2 certification, can they share CUI with their subcontractors?
Yes, they can share FCI, CUI with subcontractors, but they're generally required to flow down the relevant CMMC requirements, like D far 701270021, to ensure the subcontractor also adequately protects the information.
Flowdown is key for subs. What are the benefits if a prime contractor maintains a central, secure storage drive for FCI, CUI that subs access?
Potential benefits include better control and visibility for the prime contractor over the sensitive data, and it might allow subcontractors to operate under specific conditions, potentially without needing the same high CMMC level themselves if they only access the data through the prime's controlled environment and don't store-process it locally. Depends on the setup.
Better control, potential flexibility for subs. Are subcontractors required to change their own security policies based on the prime's requirements?
Yes, subcontractors are generally required to revise their security policies and procedures as needed to meet the compliance requirements flowed down by the prime contractor in the contract.
Subs must align policies. What are data flow diagrams used for in this context?
Data flow diagrams are used to graphically summarize the paths data takes through systems and networks, including where it's stored, processed, and transmitted. They help visualize the scope.
Visualize data paths and storage. Okay, final stretch. Let's hit some specific CMMC practices and technical requirements. Let's do it. Practice AC.L2 3.1.111 requires terminating user sessions after inactivity. Does it have to be automatic?
Yes. The key is automatic termination of user sessions after a defined period of inactivity. Manual termination doesn't meet this practice.
Automatic. Practice IA.L1 3.5.1 is about identification. What does it require at Level 1?
It requires identifying individual system users, typically through unique usernames, and using password-based authentication or similar secrets to confirm their identity.
Unique users, password off at L1. Practice AC.L2 3.1.14 talks about remote access routing. What's the principle?
The principle is to route remote access through as few managed access control points as possible to minimize the attack surface.
Minimize remote access points. Practice MPL2 3.8.6 involves protecting media during transport outside controlled areas. Are cryptographic mechanisms always required?
Not always. The practice allows for cryptographic mechanisms or strong physical protections. So, if physical protections are sufficiently robust during transport, crypto might not be strictly required by this specific practice, though often recommended.
Crypto or our physical protection for transport? What about RAL 2.11 on 2 vulnerability scanning? Does it mandate monthly scans?
No, it does not specify monthly scans. It requires scanning periodically with the frequency defined by the organization based on risk assessments and any specific requirements, like agency rules or threat intelligence.
Frequency based on risk, not fixed monthly. Can things like surveillance cameras and secure door locks help meet PE.L2 3.0.0.2, physical access monitoring?
Yes, surveillance cameras and secure locks are examples of controls that can contribute to meeting the requirements for monitoring physical access.
Okay. But are visitor sign-in sheets alone enough for that same practice, PE.L2 3.0.2?
No, visitor sign-in sheets alone are generally considered insufficient. More robust controls for monitoring and controlling visitor activity are needed for Level 2.
Sign-in sheets aren't enough alone. CLL2 3.12.1 is about assessing controls. What does it require periodically?
It requires periodic reassessment of the security controls to ensure they continue to be effective.
Reassess controls periodically. Last one. If you find an unmarked USB drive in the lobby, does plugging it into your work computer comply with MPL2 3.8.8, handling external media?
Absolutely not. Plugging in unknown external media found randomly is a major security risk and directly violates the principles of controlling and handling media from unknown sources. Don't do it.
Definitely don't plug in random USBs. Okay, that covers the practices sample. Now, let's quickly touch on export controls. Is all export-controlled information considered classified?
No, not all export-controlled information, like ITAR technical data or EER-controlled items, is classified. It can be sensitive, but unclassified CUI.
Okay. Should you send potentially ITAR-controlled technical info via your regular work email if it's hosted on a commercial cloud, like Office 365?
Generally, no. Sending ITAR technical data through standard commercial email systems without specific end-to-end encryption and controls approved for export compliance is usually a violation and very risky.
Avoid standard email for ITAR. What do embargoes and sanctions typically prohibit?
They generally prohibit trade, financial transactions, and other interactions with sanctioned countries, entities, or individuals.
Prohibit trade with sanctioned parties. What are some characteristics of items controlled by the EER Export Administration Regulations?
They are often commercial items that might also have military applications, dual use.
Mm-hmm.
Can include things like security or encryption software, and exporting them might require authorization from the Bureau of Industry and Security, BIS.
Dual-use software might need license. Does getting export licenses take long?
Yes. Acquiring necessary export licenses or authorizations can often take a significant amount of time and planning.
Plan ahead for licenses. Why was the CUI program established? What are its goals?
Key goals include complying with EO 13556 and 32 CFR 2002, enabling better collaboration while protecting sensitive data, increasing transparency where appropriate, and standardizing the labeling, handling, and safeguarding procedures across the government.
Standardize handling, enable collaboration, protect data. What can happen if a company fails to comply with US trade regulations like ITAR or EER?
Consequences can be severe. Significant penalties and fines, loss of government contracts and export privileges, major reputational damage, and even potentially harming national security.
Fines, loss of work, reputation, national security harm. Can export-controlled technical data include things like source code or software prototypes?
Yes. Technical data under regulations like ITAR can definitely include things like source code, software prototypes, blueprints, engineering designs, and maintenance documentation related to controlled items.
Code, prototypes, docs can be controlled. What kinds of projects are likely to involve US export-controlled information or services?
Examples include traveling overseas to provide technical support for a US government project, developing advanced IT security software with potential encryption capabilities, or accessing certain US military or intelligence data as part of a contract.
Overseas support, security software dev, accessing millennial data. Okay. Shifting to CUI handling and marking specifically. The CUI banner marking, does it need to be the same on every page of a document containing CUI?
Yes. The CUI banner marking must apply to the whole document and be identical on each page that contains CUI, or all pages if any page contains CUI.
Same banner on all pages. Does all CUI require some kind of marking?
Yes. Fundamentally, all CUI requires appropriate marking to identify it as such.
All CUI needs marking. When using portion marking abbreviations like CUI, where should they be placed relative to the text?
Portion markings should be placed at the beginning of the paragraph or portion they apply to.
Beginning of the paragraph. Can you summarize the key aspects of CUI?
Sure. It requires specific safeguarding but isn't classified national security information. It replaces older markings like FOU, OSBU. It has basic and specified designations with potentially different rules.
Not classified, replaces FOU, basic specified. What are some examples of physical barriers suitable for protecting CUI?
Examples include using sealed envelopes for transport, storing documents in a locked file cabinet, or keeping CUI within an area secured by an electronic lock system.
Sealed envelopes, locked cabinets, locked rooms. Is CUI just a new classification level below confidential?
No. CUI is not a classification level. It is sensitive, unclassified information requiring safeguarding.
Unclassified. Is CUI-specified a type of CUI?
Yes. CUI-specified is a designation within the broader CUI category, indicating specific handling laws, regulations, or policies apply.
Specified as a subtype. How should CUI data be destroyed? Can you just delete files?
Simple deletion isn't enough. Approved methods include using an approved crosscut shredder for physical documents or specific data-wiping destruction techniques for electronic media that meet NIST standards.
Crosscut shredder or NIST wipe destroy. Should CUI be shared freely across the entire workplace for convenience?
Absolutely not. CUI should not be shared broadly. Access should be limited to specific authorized personnel and handled on authorized devices and systems, following the principle of least privilege.
Limit access. Does CUI include information that used to be marked for official use only, FOU?
Yes. CUI encompasses information that was traditionally marked with legacy labels like FOU, OSBU, sensitive but unclassified, et cetera.
Replaces FOUSBU. What activities count as an export under regulations like ITAR?
An export isn't just shipping a box. It can include sending controlled technical information via email internationally, traveling abroad with controlled software or information on a laptop, or even providing controlled technical information to a foreign-owned company or foreign person within the US, a deemed export.
Emailing, traveling with, giving to foreign persons count. What actions are required for proper sensitive information handling generally?
Key actions include securely disposing of data when no longer needed, using sensitive data only for necessary and authorized purposes, and sharing it only through secure, approved repositories or channels.
Secure disposal, use only as needed, share securely. Do you always need an export license before exporting EER or ITAR-controlled item services?
You might need prior authorization, which could be a specific license, or the export might fall under a license exemption, ITAR or exception, ESVR. You need to determine the requirement before exporting.
Need authorization, license exemption, exception first. What about an old employment application with personal details? How should that be disposed of?
Because it contains PII, it requires secure disposal methods, like shredding, not just tossing it in the regular trash.
Secure disposal for PII. What's the correct order for elements in a CUI banner or label?
The standard order is CUI category marking, if applicable, dissemination control markings, if applicable.
CUI category dissemination. Perfect. Let's wrap with a few points on CMMC levels and technical control implementation. Okay. Which practice deals with separating duties to prevent individuals from having excessive control?
That's generally covered by practice AC.L2.3.1.4, though numbers might shift slightly between versions, the concept is in access control, focusing on separation of duties.
Separation of duties in AC. How many practices are in the awareness and training AT domain at CMMC Level 1?
There are zero practices in the awareness and training domain at Level 1. AT starts at Level 2.
Zero AT practices at L1. What are system audit logs used for?
They track system transactions and events over time, providing a record for monitoring, analysis, investigation, and reporting of system activities.
Track events for monitoring investigation. Why standardized technology configurations? What are the benefits?
Benefits include potentially reduced costs, simplified maintenance and support, and ensuring consistent security posture and vulnerability levels across similar systems.
Cost, maintenance, consistent security. CMMC Level 2 focuses on protecting what type of information?
Level 2 focuses primarily on the protection of CUI. Level 1 focuses on FCI.
Level 2 equals CUI. Which NIST publication contains the 17 practices that correspond to the FAR clause's basic safeguarding requirements?
That's NIST SP 80171. Specifically, Section 3.1 contains those 17 basic requirements referenced by FAR, 52.20421.
NIST 80171 again. Can Level 2 contractors who don't handle CUI related to critical national security programs do their own self-assessment?
Yes. Under CMMC 2.0, those Level 2 contractors handling less sensitive CUI can perform their own annual self-assessment, rather than requiring a C3PAO assessment.
Self-assessment option for some L2. Can you break down the components of a practice number like AC.L2.3.1.4?
Sure. AC is the domain, access control.
Yeah.
L2 is the level, Level 2, and 3.1.4 is the specific practice number within that domain and level. The 3 often relates to the NIST 80171 family mapping, and 1.4 is the specific identifier.
Domain, level, practice number. How many domains are there in the CMMC model?
There are 14 domains in the CMMC model structure.
14 domains. Who will conduct CMMC Level 3 assessments?
Level 3 assessments will be conducted by government assessors from the DOD's Defense Industrial Base Cybersecurity Assessment Center, DIBCA, not C3PAOs.
Government conducts L3 assessments. How many practices are required for CMMC Level 2?
CMMC Level 2 requires meeting all 110 practices derived from NIST SP 80171.
110 practices for L2. Should users typically have access to all system functionality?
No. Definitely not. The principle of least privilege dictates that users should only have access to the functions and data necessary to perform their jobs.
Least privilege. What is authentication?
Authentication is the process of verifying the claimed identity of a user, process, or device, proving you are who you say you are.
Proving identity. What plan addresses what to do after a cyber attack, dealing with data loss or service outages?
That would be the incident response plan. It outlines the steps for containment, eradication, recovery, and post-incident analysis.
Incident response plan for recovery. Should all incidents be tracked, even minor ones?
Yes. Best practice, and often requirement, like in SI or IR domains, is that any incident that occurs should be tracked and documented for analysis and potential escalation.
Track and document all incidents. Which CMMC domain addresses system vulnerabilities specifically?
The maintenance MA domain includes practices that address the maintenance of systems, which often involves managing vulnerabilities discovered during maintenance windows. Risk assessment, RA, also directly addresses vulnerability management.
Maintenance and risk assessment relate to vulnerabilities. Does federal contract information FCI need to be marked?
While FCI must be identified and secured per FAR 52.20421, that clause doesn't explicitly mandate marking FCI in the same way CUI marking is mandated. The focus is on safeguarding the information systems handling it. Marking might be a best practice or required by specific contracts, but isn't a universal FR requirement like CUI marking.
Safeguarding FCI systems required, marking less explicit than CUI. Are most data breaches caused by sophisticated nation-state hackers?
Actually, no. While nation-states are a major threat, statistics often show that many breaches are caused by less sophisticated attackers, insiders, malicious or accidental, or simple configuration errors and unpatched vulnerabilities.
Insiders and errors are major factors too. What are some examples of physical access devices?
Common examples include biometric readers, fingerprint, facial recognition, physical keys, and smart cards like the common access card.
Biometrics, keys, C-cards. Which domain addresses detecting malicious code and fixing system flaws?
That primarily falls under the system and information integrity, SI domain.
SI domain for malware flaws. Should an organization try to manage all risks equally?
No.